What do you have? Is the light pointing in? It will zoom. It's streaming to zoom. All right, how's being ordered?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment, please, for a recent passing co-press officer, Eric Wong. Thank you, please have a seat. Go call, please. Here.
Did you say my name?
Yes.
If so, I'm here.
Rachel.
Here. You're.
All right, there was an executive session on November 24th and December 8th to discuss personnel matter. I make a motion to approve the minutes and reports of November 9th, 11th, 23rd, 24th, 2020, and the Department of Police Department, Treasure, Engineer, Code Office, Public Works, and Planning Commission. Do I have a second? Second.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Is there any public comments on agenda items only at this time? Again, is there any public comments on agenda items only at this time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so no comments online or anything? All right. New business, Jamie Schott.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, so we just have a couple of things. The first is the CDBGCV Professional Services Agreement. So this is exactly like your PSAs that you execute with CEDOCOM for your normal annual entitlement, CDBG program, just for the CARES Act funding under the CV program. I'll entertain any questions you have. If not, can take action to approve the agreement if you're good with it.
I make the motion as such.
Second.
Reese.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
I start.
Yes.
Carl David.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. The second item is a citizen participation plan. I'm sure you recall, a couple of months ago, I was there and we adopted a two citizen participation plan because it wasn't the five-year time to do so. But right after that, DCD came out with the model you now have in front of you, which is just the same thing in a much more wordier fashion. And we are required to adopt it because DCD came out with a new model. So I would ask that you take action to adopt this new citizen participation plan.
Motion as such.
Second.
Rachel.
Yes.
I start.
Yes.
Carl David.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes. Thank you.
So those are the two items needed action. Then, just for updates, the CDBGCV, we are working on putting together subrecipient agreements. But we don't usually do this in the city because usually the city has its own projects. But with the CARES Act money, we did select projects that we are working with the CSO for substantive payments. We're working with the school district for a lending or a remote learning program with SRI for business relief and for the hand washing stations and then the fire company for a mask fitting apparatus. So those, we're going to execute subrecipient agreements with those entities so that they can are insured to follow all the regulations as well. Those are being prepared right now. And what we'll do is we'll send them to the subrecipients, have them execute them, and then I'll bring them back to the city to be executed at a meeting if that's the way you'd like to do it.
Okay, thank you.
That work for you?
Yes.
Okay, and then just for your information, the 2017 CDBG funds, as you recall, you had put money, $3,000 into the training facility for the fire department. Unfortunately, they were unable to get an invoice with the proper date. The invoice was dated prior to the clearance of the environmental review, so we're unable to pay it. So that $3,000 will have to be rebudgeted into something else. And right now, the only option really is Reagan Street. Because of the timeliness of those funds, we have to get it in the next thing that's going to spend any money, which is Reagan Street right now. So that, there is no action tonight. If you're good with it, I will send over the public hearing notice so that it can be posted and we'll have the public hearing for that modification at the January 11th meeting.
I'll make the motion as such.
Second.
Rachel.
Yes.
I start.
Yes.
Carl David.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, those are the items I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No. Jamie, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, you too.
All right, councilman Reitner.
Okay. Make the motion that we pay $146,806.11 out of the general fund and $302.50 out of liquid fuels. Make the motion, we pay those bills.
Second.
I start.
Yes.
Carl David.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, tax exoneration. There's eight requests for tax exoneration for a total of $1,211.65. Three were deceased, three are non-residents, one is student, and one is on SSI. I make a motion that we waive or exonerate the people from the taxes.
Second.
Carl David.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Resolution 202043, make a motion to use or do the tax. Let me, nothing has changed to say the general revenue is .027, recreation .002, library .00025, debt reduction .002. I make a motion that we keep the levy as is. Second.
Carl David.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so in your packets, you all have a copy of the proposed job description for the city clerk's position and city administrator's position, looking at the priorities that we need for the city for the next two-year outlook regarding positions. The changes effects, such as the city administrator would be primarily focused on economic development, grant researching and application for the city. And then on the city clerk's side, all the grant processes of the city clerks would then be given to the city administrator, and the city clerk would then be responsible for the supervision of supervisors of each of the departments for the council's decisions. Is there any questions regarding either of the job descriptions? All right, with that, then I make a motion to approve the job description for city clerk and the city administrator. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
I start.
Yes.
Carl David.
Yes.
Hire of a city administrator. So we've completed our interviews, meetings. So I make a proposal to hire Derek Backer, current SRI director, as new city administrator for the city on a two-year contract, starting January 4th, with a beginning salary of $55,000.
Rachel.
Yes.
I start.
Yes.
Carl David.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
The contract is not on here.
Do you want to add that to your motion?
Where is the employment agreement?
I've never seen it.
Joel sent an email one out, and then Chris talked about what that one change of.
Chris, where's the employment agreement for the city administrator?
I mean, what Joel sent, I don't know.
Yeah, Joel sent that in email last week, and then Chris just said that one thing that was missing about the vacation time that we agreed upon, that was that.
Yeah.
So did you have it updated?
Joel said he was going to update it once we passed it. He knew we were passing with that change. That was the only thing that was different.
Yes, I spoke with Chris today. I said that as soon as it passed with that change, I will provide one, a copy, to the council tomorrow such that it can be executed. But I wanted, I didn't want to do that until we had the agreement of Mr. Backer to everything, and Chris did receive that this afternoon then.
Okay, thank you.
Last year, I gave a kind of a year-end review of what was going on, things that were coming. So I'm going to, the mayor asked me to do that again for this year, so bear with me and I'll go through my report. Over the last year, the Sunbury Police Department has been very busy as we continue to build the department in a positive direction. We have made many strides and overcome challenges during this time. In my view, it has been a success for the city. Many trainings have been conducted over the past year, considering the COVID-19 pandemic, as we've had to adapt to new ways to get training and advance a department this year. During the past year, we've had several officers go through specialized trainings and are as follows. Certified field sobriety instructor, certified wiretap specialist, certified police cyclist course, completion of de-escalation techniques, completion of implicit bias and racial profile training, training of two TAC officers to the clean system, training to the PA Chief Virtual Network for dealing with autism, victims with disabilities, veterans in crisis, the lock zone training, responding to LDBQ+ victims, responding to male victim partner violence, block armor courses, police executive development through the Penn State Institute, and supervisor leadership training. These are just to name a few. We've conducted several department meetings going over rules and regulations such as use of course, traffic stops, drug interdictions, and engaging with the public. We continue to conduct online training and conform to policing in the 21st century as it is changing daily. Other activities conducted include proactive patrolling, utilizing several grants to the DUI task force, look at a ticket aggressive drivers, and underage drinking education enforcement and patrols. All these proactive patrols have been secured through grants and reimbursable wages to minimize the cost to the taxpayer. Some of the grants our department has worked on and received or in process are the following. For PCCD, $47,553 for body cameras and in-car cameras. We have received the award letter and are waiting to release the funds. The federal government is currently reviewing our body camera and in-car camera policies, and once that is reviewed, they accept that they will release the funds. We applied for a grant through State Farm for $7,200. We're trying to purchase hand sanitizer stations for the city departments, traffic control devices, barricades, stop signs, cones, et cetera, to be used by the police department and also for the Department of Public Works. We have not received any notification for it yet, but as soon as we do, I will let you know. We also applied for a grant through Walmart for $3,000. This is a new grant, and we are in the early stages of filing out the appropriate paperwork with the city clerk who applied for the funds. The funds will be reused at Walmart to purchase new TV monitors to be placed throughout the new police station. The PLCB, $40,000, is applied for and granted to be used over a two-year period. The purpose of the grant is to be used for underage education, equipment such as PBTs, enforcement patrols, and an educational video. These funds received will not only benefit the police department, but again, also to the taxpayer and city funds. The underage drinking grant that was secured will help educate our youth of the laws and consequences of underage drinking. We'll be able to do proactive patrols, video education, and in-person education to the schools following the COVID-19 protocols. We also were able to secure a vehicle through the DUI Association at a minimal cost, which will be converted to assist us in our underage education, crime scene equipment, and most importantly, community relations. Since 2018, we have hired 60 officers, and they have gone through a rigorous field training course to make them better prepared for the streets and the city's needs. We have had two officers resign over the past year, but currently our staff is at nine officers, including myself and one part-timer. To say that last year has been trying and busy is an understatement. We have worked hard to solve numerous major incidents in the city, and the officers have demonstrated superior knowledge and dedication to solve many of those crimes, all while learning and educating themselves through the process. As of November 1st, 2019, the department was dispatched to 8,331 calls for service. There were many incidents that were investigated and solved, including an involuntary manslaughter charge, which was successfully prosecuted through the Northumberland County DA's office. As of December 1st, 2020, we handled 7,608 calls for service, a slight decrease due to the COVID-19 pandemic. But during this year, several major incidents occurred requiring numerous main hours of proper investigation. The incidents included attempted homicide with a knife, attempted homicide with a gun, attempted assault with a gun with shots fired into an occupied home, attempted assault with a gun. Numerous search warrants where several guns, drugs, and money received have taken off the streets. In the past few weeks, we have had two robberies with guns, and out of one investigation, there were several other robberies that were found to have happened and are being investigated by other respective agencies due through our departments for relentless investigations. The overtime hours that were used for those incidents amounted to about 152 hours of overtime. These hours are just the initial hours it takes to properly investigate crimes of that nature. And I can tell you this much, the officers have impressed me not only with their professionalism, but with their dedication to make sure that these crimes were investigated thoroughly while continuing to answer other calls for services. As you can see, our department has been very busy, but they are determined group to make sure that the citizens of Sunbury are safe and will continue to do so. In 2019, traffic arrests were at 419. And in 2020, during a time when traffic contacts were slowed due to COVID-19, we are still at 311 traffic violations up through November. In 2020, many of our community outreach programs were halted due to the COVID-19 pandemic, but there have been a few we were able to address. We met with Congressman Fred Cowler to talk about the needs and goals of police departments going forward. Part of that talk involved accreditation, funding for local police departments when it comes to police reform, and what is needed and expected of us with the ever-changing police techniques, policing techniques. We also dealt with three to four protests in the city, all being peaceful. I spoke with every leader of the protest groups and let them know that we are hearing what they are saying and making sure we here at Sunbury are striving to be the best, to make sure everyone is treated equally. The mayor has also been at the forefront to create a citizens' police advisory commission in the city, to have members of the community be more involved in understanding what law enforcement does and ensure that their voices are heard for the benefit of the community as a whole. We also must remember that during this time, we are training new officers, which takes time and patience. We are making sure that these officers are properly trained and equipped, also while handling the daily operations with limited manpower that we have. We have time and money invested in these officers to make sure that the citizens of Sunbury are receiving the best police services possible. In the upcoming year, we have several things planned for training to include several more interdepartmental trainings. We have now partnered with Lexipol to have their most updated policies and trainings with the Police One Academy. Supervisors will continue to educate themselves with training from the FBI leader and the Penn State Institute for Leadership and Command. We have an officer ready to present a class for Don't Be a Victim, more education on underage drinking, DUIs, gun safety, bicycle safety, just to name a few. With the COVID-19 pandemic, we are still working out the finer details, but we will be getting through these in the upcoming year. As you can see, we are going to be reaching out to the community and more part of our ever-changing dynamics of the department. Community first is our goal. As you know, we are looking at 2021 as a big year for the department, moving into the new building on Arch Street. The Sunbury Police Department has been shuffled around over the years, from the first floor at City Hall, the basement at City Hall, and currently in the 440 Market Street site. The move to the new building is an exciting time for us as we continue to rebrand our department into the 21st century. Part of that rebranding is also becoming an accredited department to the state, which we are about 90% complete. With the move to the new building, we anticipate being accredited by the end of 2021. I might not have hit all the points you want to hear, but I wanted to give you a small update of what we have accomplished over the last year and show we are moving forward in a positive direction. It takes a great team to get these things done, and that team we have assembled over the last year has been a great asset to the city. That includes Sergeant Travis Bremigen, Corporal Bradley Slack, Officer Keith Tendarelli, Officer Aaron Doyle, Officer Trey Kurtz, Officer Terry Ketchum, Officer Derek Kieske, Office Manager Marcus X. Bethel, and Parking Enforcement Officer Todd Harvey. I also want to commend Mayor Kurt Karlowitz for allowing us to move forward and have faith in what we are accomplishing. Must also thank Councilman James Eisner, Councilman Rick Reitner, Councilman Chris Reese, and Councilman Josh Rogers also for the support they show in our efforts. I would like to thank City Administrator Jody Acker and City Clerk Jolynn Barner for being there to assist us in our rebranding and assistance over the past year. We still have a lot to do and look forward to a very successful 2021. Thank you for your time and be safe out there. Respectfully submitted, Bradley B. Herr, Chief of Police.
Thank you very much for that report, Chief. You can just please make sure that Jolynn gets a copy of that. As we can see, our police department has been extremely busy, proactive, and moving forward. All right, councilman Reese, the historic district building.
I'm going to pass this, I think, to Jody, maybe?
Sure, guys. So I did actually attend the heart beating, so I can speak to this. So this has to do with the property at 326 Market Street. And if you can look up on the screen, you can see the picture of it. This is the Ark Susquehanna, that currently occupies that. It's a big storefront, lots of glass. It is in the historic district, of course, and it is considered a contributing structure. Their plan is to make some improvements to the facade, which will basically, it'd be a brick front with two windows in the front and then handicap accessible door entrance. This will help them in energy efficiency. The plan and the photos that you see on the slide and in your packet, that was presented to the HARM that met on December 1st, and the HARM recommends approval.
I'll make a motion to accept this.
My second.
Carl David.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes. Do we know when they're planning on beginning this? The construction, Chris?
I don't know the date of construction.
All right, this is our extension of real property.
Right, so can we see, we signed the real property transfer agreement, land rights in the city of Sunbury for the transfer of those vacant parcels of land to the city of Sunbury. The deadline to close on the transfer was on before November 30th. We reached that deadline. We now need to extend the agreement so that the closing should occur on before December 31st. All other terms of the agreement remain the same.
So we'll make this into a motion to accept.
Can I jump in real quick?
Go ahead, Joel.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that the title search is completed as far as the real property. There are no title issues at all. Attorney Balducci has prepared a deed, which I reviewed and approved, and he has sent that out to be executed. We are hoping to close on this property this week. We've already voted to do that as long as the pedal search came back clearly. It did, and therefore, I'm pleased to report that I'm very hopeful this will close this week.
Fantastic, Joel.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so we got a motion in a second.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
I start.
Yes.
Carl David.
Yes.
All right, that's right.
So you have your packet, there's a note from SRI, this is regards to a bid for architecture firm to scope or to produce the bid specifications for work on the Albrecht Center. Because the city of Sunbury manages the grant for the SRI, and they are the subrecipient, SRI requests us to approve their quote. The scope of the work is for the audio, visual, and light bid specifications for the architectural plan, the architect, the firm that is doing the plans overall, does not do the specific kind of work, that's why they have to go out to a third party. The estimated cost is under the bid threshold, and the quote is submitted by Gellinoff and Associates. They request an approval of the bid.
And that was, excuse me, that was also my suggestion. Derek had contacted me concerning whether it was necessary or a good idea to have this approved by council. And since it is a departure from what was previously approved, I suggested it would probably be a good idea to have council approve this just to avoid any appearance of impropriety as we've had in the past. I mean, I don't think there was any impropriety, but we don't even want to give an appearance of any impropriety.
Thank you.
That's it.
Second.
Reese.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
I start.
Yes.
Carl David.
Yes. Yes.
All right, councilman Reitner, 20 second reading of the 2021 budget.
Okay. Yeah, officially, we have a balanced budget with no new taxes. And I make a motion, we accept the budget of $410,249.78 with about an $18,000 carryover, so.
Second.
Rachel.
Yes.
I start.
Yes.
Carl David.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Right, when you bend, second reading.
Yes, this is the second read from Bill 2020 that's a special on private events. Presented as a first reading in November 9th. There had also been, prior to that, a work session. It had originally been presented on, actually, the 12th of October. Then there was a work session on the 26th of October, and then it was presented as first reading on November 9th. It does establish a permit requirement for events in the public driveway or public property, but it removed the permit fee that was in the current ordinance. The permit application would be submitted to the city clerk's office, and that city clerk then would coordinate the approval through the necessary departments, EPW, Parks Rec, Police Department, Fire Department, as applicable. And then, once each department was able to sign off and agree that there were no issues with the event, then the event could be approved. We also have in there for private events provision for private use of public facilities, which had not been in an ordinance previously. And then it also reserves the council's authority to assess fees to cover costs of a city resource in support of any event, if that's necessary.
Here we go.
That's the summary.
Second.
I start.
Yes.
Carl David.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
All right, boards, authority, committee appointments.
Right, so as instructed, the city clerk's office, the city administration has been accepting letters of interest or openings on various boards, authorities, and committees. You see the table up there on display with each board and how many openings it has, and then the list of names of people that have expressed interest. And the key there to the right, where there is one, Meredith Cooper for the Housing Authority, was recommended by the board to serve on the board, but she had not actually submitted a letter of interest. May not be an issue. If there's an R in the column to the right, that means it's a reappointment. If it's an N, it's a new candidate. And the X in the last column indicates that this person was recommended by the board to serve.
And just so council is aware, any person that's on the list that has not submitted a letter of interest by themselves will not be recommended by me for any of the issues.
So my question for the council is, what do you want to see as the next step in the process? Do you want us to contact each of the chairpeople for these boards and commissions and find out who they would want to recommend for an appointment? What is, how would you like us to proceed?
So I already discussed this with the city clerk. We're going to move forward with. We're going to move forward with, um, and January, first meeting in January is when we're gonna be making recommendations for all the appointments or appointments. So the way I'm looking at now, if it's, uh, a current member on a board and they submitted their letter of interest and they want to be reappointed, they get the, the position again, we'll be making that recommendation. If it's a open and vacant position and it's a new candidate, but it's been recommended by the board, that person will be priority recommended for the position. If it's an open position and there is no recommendation by the board, then we're going to be conducting interviews of each of the candidates before the recommendation will be submitted.
And at this point, we have one open position.
Yeah, there's, uh, one, uh, open position on the planning commission for which there are no letters of interest.
Okay. And then, uh, we'll bring a list for approval at the first meeting in January.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. Thank you.
Department of Public Safety Supervisor.
So as approved in the, uh, 2021 budget, there is a position created for a full-time, uh, safety, Department of Public Safety Supervisor. Um, this is a high priority for the department, so we plan to finalize the job description this week and begin advertising for the opening as soon as possible. Um, hoping to hire in 2021, early in 2021. Uh, certainly in February, it's probably projected. Councilman Reese, anything else you want to add?
No, thinking now that, I think the job description hopefully means in work and, uh, should be ready to go, so we can get it out soon and see what we get as far as applications.
What, what's the salary you're gonna be starting this position at?
We budgeted for 40, but we'll see what, uh, comes in, what we, but we budgeted.
Okay. All right, not in from retirement plan?
So, sometime back was tasked to, uh, create an RFP for 401K plan for city employees. As I was looking into that, uh, discovered that, uh, local government employees are not eligible for 401K, but they may participate in something similar, which is the 457B plan. Um, so I was doing some research on the 457B, finding out exactly what it is, how it's administered, and also look for, uh, sample request proposals. I found one from the City of York. I also then, um, called the North Beverly National Bank. I also contacted Conrad Segal, who had one of their representatives, um, sit down with me over Zoom. We talked about, uh, the 457B and how it would work. So basically, they generally do not work as a standalone, uh, retirement, uh, plan, contribution plan. Usually they work in conjunction with a municipal retirement plan. What we currently do is we participate in the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System, and it is a defined benefit plan. Um, according to Conrad Segal's recommendation, is you would change, um, from the defined benefit plan uh, to a defined contribution plan. And usually that would be, uh, so, uh, such a, so, so, so percent of gross wages of the employee, the municipality would contribute to a retirement plan, pension plan. Um, this would be, uh, as opposed to the defined benefit plan. This is more predictable for budgeting, because there isn't that variation where you have to fund the plan because of the funding is low and you have to make up for lost, lost funds for whatever reason. Um, you could scale back your municipal contribution to lower than what you are, are contributing now in the defined benefit plan. And then the employee would contribute to their 457B. It has similar limits to a, uh, 401K or IRA with like $19,500. Um, if you're over a certain age, there's a catch-up, uh, where you can, uh, invest another $6,000 or $6,500. Um, there are pre and post-tax options. You can make the plan voluntary, or you can make it mandatory participation, or you can enroll them automatically with them having to actively opt out. It would give some younger folks some options if they'd rather have the money in their pocket and not contribute to it. They could do that voluntarily, but they would, you know, be advised. And part of the management of the plan would be to provide the employees with financial planning education to, um, to plan for their retirement. So, with all that information, what I think, um, might be should be the next step is for the council to have a consultation with the representative from Conrad Segal to really talk through what these options are. And, and then the council can kind of determine what direction you would like to go, then to formulate what that plan would look like. So, um, if you would like, I will schedule that, but I don't know when you would like to try to schedule such a meeting. We have a lot going on.
Do you make, do you have like a, a timeline when we would have to make a decision? Or this, because I don't want us to be rushed like we would with the help here.
No, there wouldn't be any timeline that you would have to do it. This is all voluntary. Voluntary decision.
So I would ask to set up a kind of a Zoom meeting in January.
Also, I want to mention, people are also referring to the, the, called cash-based plan. And the market doesn't, it's, it's not invested in the market. Market doesn't affect the plan, like, uh, defined plan. So we have some different options to go, but.
Yeah, there's some good choices.
And this is all, understand this is all for new employees coming on, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Not, not the current, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that. So, um.
So I, I'll work with, uh, Jolynn and get that together.
Because it'll have to be advertised as a work session. All right, Enterprise, please.
Okay, so, um, uh, when we were in the bu, in the budget meeting talking about, uh, procurement of a new, of new vehicles, um, there was, uh, a discussion a little bit about, uh, different ways and methods and strategies for vehicle procurement. Um, I happen to have been contacted by a vendor from, a representative from Enterprise, that's Enterprise, the car running company. And they also offer fleet procurement services. Um, they are, they're, they're participants and they satisfy the due diligence for government, dealing with government contracts, et cetera. So that, uh, representative, um, we were on a Zoom call and, uh, with myself and Chief Herr, and to get an overview of the program and how it works. So basically, Enterprise has a huge fleet, and they leverage their buying power to purchase vehicles, being government contracts and manufacturer, uh, incentive. They leverage all those together to get the very best price they can on, on vehicles, including emergency response vehicles, pickup trucks, um, uh, and various types of vehicles. So Enterprise purchases direct from the manufacturer, acting whatever government rate based on incentives, and they will continue to hold the title. And then they would execute or would, um, get, have an agreement with the city for a commercial open-end lease slash finance plan to the municipality, or then the municipality use the vehicle for a certain term. Could be three years, depending on the type of vehicle, could be five years. And then the veh, vehicle would be sold at the end of the term, and the money comes back to the city. Um, what it will do is reduce the total cost of ownership by shortening the vehicle lifecycle. So, the vehicle, uh, they count on, say, a, a pickup truck in DPW. Pickup, resale on pickup trucks is just amazing right now, right? So you can buy a used one, they're still hold their value. And in DPW, they don't put thousands and thousands of miles on your pickup here. So they count on that you're selling a, um, a used pickup truck with low mileage. I say year five, five-year-old, and there's a point at which your return on, on that almost pays for your past, the, the cost of your term. So almost becomes, so it really, um, decreases the lifetime cost of the item. Um, so what they would do, this, we, we sent Enterprise a list of the, of our vehicles from, um, in our fleet inventory. And we have approximately 28 eligible vehicles currently in our inventory. We would have to provide them some additional data regarding the annual fuel costs, maintenance and repair costs. They'll do all the crunching of the numbers and look at the, um, the age and condition of all those vehicles and develop a, uh, procurement and replacement strategy. Now, including that, we also said, look, we need to look at what are the right, uh, number of vehicles and types of vehicles that are needed in each department. Um, not what we've always had, not, not to replace what we currently have in our inventory, but what's the right inventory to have based on, on our workload and what we do. So that would be all be part of the assessment, and then they would develop this plan and present it to council for consideration. So, question is, you want us to continue to pursue?
Is there a cost of them creating this plan?
No. You have anything else to add?
I mean, what, what they went over with last week, I mean, it, it, there's an upfront cost at first. Um, but again, we've been talking about this for a long time about the city needs to start looking at capital improvements and doing things like that to make sure that we're not spending money where we don't need to be spending money on like maintenance and stuff like that, so. Uh, the way he presented it, like he said, that was one of the questions we asked was, can you evaluate each department also and decide what, what department, what vehicles each department needs? So, uh, it, again, upfront cost to it, but down the road, it's, it's gonna save money. And he just did a few, an area, I think the county, I know the county does a fleet management program also to replace their vehicles, and I think it's a win-win for the city as a whole. He also, what he also mentioned was, when it comes to police vehicles, because police vehicles tend to have more miles because they're being run 24/7. He said the outfitting of the police vehicles, he can almost cut that in half the way he talked. Uh, so instead of having a 15, $10,000 to $15,000 front cost to outfit a vehicle, when they resell the vehicle, it's literally, he said, about $7,580. It's like, it's cut half almost, outfit those vehicles also, so.
So the, the upfront cost is that we decide to do the program. There's upfront, you, you.
Because you gotta buy, you gotta put your initial startup.
Purchase vehicles to get into the cycle. However, for them to do the evaluation, to present you with the analysis and the, and the plan, that's not, there's no cost to that.
So I would make, I make the recommendation to proceed, just so we can get this, uh, cremating report.
Okay, we'll do. Okay, the 2021 fee schedule, I did send that out to, uh, council member and the others, uh, over a week ago. And, um, I think you have a copy of what I, I put in the packet there. Um, my, I want to have those ready for you to adopt by resolution at your first meeting in January. But there's some, open, there's some questions that, um, I should have to have answered, and those are on the kind of the far right-hand side of the column. What I did was I had to go through all of the city code, all the new, uh, ordinances that we've adopted, all the updates and changes that we made. Because in the, in the codification where, uh, the ordinance specified a specific fee, we changed most of that to say fees as maybe assessed, maybe established by council by resolution from time to time. That gives some flexibility to be able to update these by resolution without having to, um, update your city ordinance. Um, I've developed this draft to show you, it shows you the specific code reference and the respective fee that it's calling for. So, I just had some questions about, um, the fees for subdivision of land and, uh, stormwater and all of that. There are certain laws in the municipal planning code that we have to be careful of because they were designed to prevent excessive, uh, penalties on charging excessively for plan reviews. So I think that's something that I may need to work with Joel on to make sure that we're doing things appropriately. Um, and I wasn't sure what the engineer, there was a couple of things where the engineering fee for an exception to your storm drain design was $5. Well, I don't think that covers John Makovich's cost to review a plan. So, that does need to be updated, but that, there needs to be some more research and work done on that. The other is for, um, public facilities fees, like, uh, when we do rentals in the parks, playground, pool, great rentals. I know that, um, the Parks and Playground Director or Pool and Playground Director establishes fees for table rentals and all of that stuff. But does that need to be in the fee schedule and approved by resolution? I guess that's a question to Joel.
I'm back. Um, yeah, I think, sorry, it does need to be approved by resolution.
So you can either put that in the, um, this annual resolution that you do in January, or you can wait, you know, seasonally and approve fee schedule along the way, correct?
Correct.
I just want to know what the plan's gonna be so we can make it happen.
So what, what do you need from us to make, to, to allow us to approve this at first meeting in January?
I think you might need to have, you may need to have a work session early in January. You know, after the, the first week in January, when we're back, and your new city administrator is here, something that we can do together, have, have the, have the work session and go, go through the fees.
Okay, so let's do that.
I second that view for what it's worth.
I've got a question. Chris, has there been any decision on the permit fees uh, that are going away and the planning fee against the, uh?
You talking about like the zoning fee and stuff?
Right.
I for, I think, I forget what it says on there. I think we decided like $75.
I don't, I didn't see it on here. That's why I don't know if I'm.
I think that was the number we could justify. We're still waiting though, because we still have to implement that whole process with NAIC and everything. Um, so, you know, we have it all passed, but, you know, obviously things are still in, in planning. So I think when we meet, we'll, we'll have a better idea of that.
Okay.
And then we have, when we have the, um, work session, when we go through, we can make sure that the, the, what we're citing is from city code or whatever, where we know why we're charging the fee, what we're charging it for. So we'll be able to, you know, highlight what that zoning plan review fee is. Ready? Uh, so the next is the DCNR peer grant, uh, bike head audit. Happy to announce that, uh, the bicycle and pedestrian peer grant was awarded in the amount $10,000 to the city. The city does have a match requirement of, uh, $1,000 for the project. I did, uh, speak with the DCNR project manager today. We just got the letter, the letter was dated, uh, November 24th. It actually didn't get to me right away because they were using .com as my email, email address instead of .org. But I do have the, the letter now, it's in your packet. Um, so he and I discussed the next steps. I wanted to point out that we did, uh, partner with some organizations who provided letters on their intention to be part of this, is a community team kind of activity. So Cetacog, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, provided a letter, the Greater Susquehanna Valley United Way and the Shingley School District. So our next steps is, one, the agreement with the state, that's working its way through the state offices that all have to sign off on it. Once that's all signed off, we'll be able to select a consultant. Um, the DCNR project manager provided me names of two that they worked with in the past that they recommended, so we can look into those. I'll be asking them for resumes and samples of their work. And then we would draft and sign a contract with them. Then the consultant would begin work with the community team. So there would be members of the community on the team from those organizations that we can get others involved that will do this bicycle pedestrian audit. They're gonna look at where do people need to move about, get from one point to another. Are there safe, um, ways, routes for people to travel by all, you know, walking and bicycling, and then make a plan. Once we do that, we would follow on with the Walk Works Grant that we would apply for this year that we just kind of, once we get the peer grant done, uh, with the bike head audit, then you move right into kind of developing an action plan, a transportation act, action plan through the Walk Works Grant program. And then, that will lead to pursuing funding for specific projects to have them done and improvements done. So, that's just, that's what I. Any questions?
No. Do we need to do anything?
Okay, now I'm gonna give you an update on the stamp program. Um, we had our stamp team meeting back in November 18th, where they presented their initial observations and preliminary recommendations, and all the council members got, got, uh, copies of that report. Um, then, then we had some other additional meetings with some of the consultants, management partners with, we've got like the. partners, with, we met with Department of Public Safety, where we talked about different ways of organizing that department in order to have the full-time supervisor. And then I also had a meeting with them to discuss the management audit on December first, they just needed some clarification from me on a couple of items. Also, a financial management tool, that's the one that the trainer and I attended, and they showed us how to use that financial model tool. So when you make changes in the budget and, you know, different things, you can actually plug it in and it will show you the impact of that over the next several years. There was also a meeting with the mayor and Chief Care on the, on police department observations. I think there's still some work that's going to be done with that, with data that they're collecting about dispatch calls and volume. And then we also had a meeting on December ninth with Jamie Schroeder from CEDOC, myself and Joel Lynn, talking about CDPG and economic development and leveraging, if we could, any CDPG money in, in what days are most possible. So I just want to let you know that things are still ongoing and in progress. This, to the right is an update of their timeline, where originally they wanted to have a final report to council by the end of December, that is pushed to mid-January. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Next city council, next city council meeting is January eleventh?
Oh, twenty twenty-one.
One to twenty-one. The Zoom and Facebook Live. Is there any public comments at this time? Any public comments at this time?
Yeah, I'd like to say some.
Say your name, please.
Ann Saxton, City Controller. I just want to commend the mayor and city council for working diligently on the 2021 budget in your efforts to best serve the interests of the taxpayers and city. You all work very hard, and again, I commend you for it, and, and to wish you all a happy holidays and safe and prosperous New Year. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Yes, sir.
Any other public comments?
May I please speak for a moment? This is Bree Afflebaum-Cula. I just wanted to reach out and on behalf of the RA, but also from a personal professional and just in general standing here, just wanted to offer the sincerest condolences for Eric's loss. He was a true community member, family man, and made an impact on all of our lives at the city level. I, I just wanted to take a moment and, and make sure that from, especially the RA, they couldn't be here tonight, and so I'm speaking on their behalf to just make sure that everybody knows that we are thinking of Eric, his family, and all of you in this sad time.
Thank you, Bree.
Thanks.
Any other audience comments?
I had a couple of comments. If I could speak, this is Megan Beck.
Okay.
First of all, again, I, I reiterate Bree's comments on Eric. This is a very, a very sad thing. There have been a lot of very sudden deaths recently, non-COVID related, and that was, it was very shocking to hear about him. He is definitely was a credit to our community. One concern that I have, I just wanted to clarify from what I heard earlier in the meeting, just because I couldn't visually see the construction request that, for the, the arc on Market Street. Do I understand correctly that they are, are bricking, significantly bricking up a retail storefront in the downtown?
Yes.
Yeah. It's similar, it's similar to some other buildings that were done in the downtown.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I mean, with it being a contributing building, I'm just kind of surprised. I, I guess, I'm trying to understand what are his, are Harb boards, I guess.
You, you, we'll make the diagram available on the city's website.
Okay.
It is available in the supporting.
Okay.
Right. I'm just trying to figure, I guess, what standard our Harb is trying to be in compliance with, because it just, that just kind of surprises me that we're, that we're doing that. I do know there are a couple of buildings like that, but I would say that isn't historically accurate. So I don't know, I'm just not sure exactly where to bring my comment to, but just that I'm not, this that I have concerns, I guess, about.
So I, I would say the overall current condition versus what they're proposing to build, it'll be a, an improvement and an asset to our downtown area.
I think it's the same thing, but looks pretty much the same thing that the doctor was obviously, very similar to that, which was also.
I'm sorry, couldn't quite hear you.
Well, Megan, what he, Perkright was saying, the clinic, that appearance resembles this, the new design, or, and the one right up the street, I'm trying to remember who's in there right now, hasn't moved there, maybe five years ago. It's kind of hard to reject something now after you allow these two other buildings to be refurbished within the last ten years.
Right, but I don't know that the Harb standard is, is to match, you know, what's been done in the past ten years. I think it is to maintain the character of the community. So like, I, I, you know, I, I guess I understand why the decision was made, but I, I don't know, I guess I, I personally disagree with it. If we have a Harb board, like their obligation is to say no sometimes when it doesn't match, you know, the historic character of our downtown, or eventually there will be no historic character to our downtown, and I think the reason it defeats the purpose of having the Harb. That's just my consideration, in my opinion. The, the other concern I had, of course, I'm just going to beat a really dead horse, which is, I still have, haven't seen any confirmation on that six hundred dollar permit fee as to the justification for why those, that is six hundred dollars for a new permit fee for rentals. That would.
But that has been sent to you, Megan.
I haven't received anything like that.
Joel, are you still here?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, I think that Megan's question was about the, the fees for the zoning fees of the six hundred dollars. She hasn't been notified or gotten.
Information on why or justification behind why it is six hundred dollars.
And I can't tell you that off the top of my head. I know we've discussed it. I can get with Jody tomorrow. It sounds like Jody already has that together and may have tried to forward it, but I will get with Jody tomorrow, make sure Megan has answers on that as soon as tomorrow.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other audience comments? Any other audience comments? All right, thank you all for joining the meeting, we're being adjourned.